Good evening. Calling to order the Township of Warminster Board of Supervisors meeting for Thursday, November 7, 2019. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? And Ms. Freskettor, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for one moment as we observe a moment of silence to remember those men and women who protect us both at home and overseas. Thank you. All right. Good evening, everyone, on a rainy Thursday evening. Thank you for coming to the meeting. Thank you for watching. We're going to kick off the agenda. It's a little bit of a light agenda, so hopefully not a 10 o'clock meeting tonight. We're going to lead off with announcements. We're going to do it a little bit different. I'm going to lead off with announcements. First, before I get into my main remarks, I do want to note that we are pulling item 3B from the agenda this evening. 3B will not be on the agenda this evening, and maybe we revisit it in a later agenda. Really quickly, I want to recognize that on Tuesday evening, Tuesday all day, and then into the evening, we had our general election. And on the Board of Supervisors, we'll be welcoming two new members. Ken Hayes and Judy Hoover were elected to serve on the board beginning in January, January 6, 2020. They'll begin their terms. So congratulations to Ken and Judy on their victory. Also, Mary Owens was elected as a Township Otter, so congratulations, Mary. And I would be remiss not to note that our very own Mr. Brian Monroe was elected to a position within Bucks County, and that was Clerk of Courts. So my sincere congratulations to Mr. Monroe and his victory. And I'm sure I will have much to say before you leave, so I'm not going to give you too many compliments right now. But congratulations, Brian, on your victory.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. With that, that's all the announces I had for today. I'd like to ask Mr. McKee to speak next.
Thank you, Mr. Crowley, Mr. Chairman. I echo the chairman's statements, Mr. Crowley's statements. I was telling Ms. Freskettor before the meeting, you guys ran one hell of a campaign. You did, and you deserve a lot of credit for it. And I wish you the most success possible to Mr. Hayes and Ms. Hoover and Kathy and whoever Brian's replacement is. And that brings me to congratulating Brian as well. Congratulations, Brian. Well done. And I wish you great success up in Doylestown, my friend.
Thank you, Mark. I appreciate all the nice comments. And I do just want to say that I take every vote, anybody that's ever run for an office, we all take every single vote seriously, especially the ones in our own neighborhoods as well as here in Warminster Township. And my heart's very light right now. And so thank you very much to everybody that went out there and took place in the process and voted. It was phenomenal seeing the percentages that came out in these off-year elections that most people forget about, and not so this year. So thank you to everybody out there.
I just have a couple more things to add, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to remind everyone that November is Movember, which is Men's Health Awareness Month, so how about scheduling your colonoscopies before the holidays because they get it over with anyway? So as a fortunate survivor, I have to drive that home every day. And it means a lot to me when people call and say, hey, I got my colonoscopy. I just got a call the other day, in fact, from someone, so it means a lot to me to get those phone calls. So I don't sound like a broken record with it, but I feel compelled to do so. And I also want to recognize and congratulate Dr. David Ball over at the school district for being named Superintendent of the Year in the state of Pennsylvania, which is a pretty large honor. And I think they'll be having something for him in December that will be, the public will be able to participate if they'd like to. But congratulations to Dr. Dave. And congratulations. Sixers call time. All right. Okay. And I'd also like to congratulate the new school directors that are incoming as well. I don't think I should mention them, but hopefully in our next meeting, I'm sure Ms. Hoover and Mr. Hayes are home getting some well-deserved rest. Hopefully, we'll see them at the next meeting, and they can come up and introduce themselves to the folks as supervisors-elect. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. McKee. Ms. Freskettor.
Yes, I also would like to comment. I was very impressed with the amount of folks that did come out to place their vote. And I always tell everyone, regardless of how you vote, it's your voice. So always try to go to vote. I have announcements tonight on behalf of Warminster Parks and Recs Department. We have the Radio City Christmas Spectacular Trip, Saturday, November 16, 7:45 a.m. to 6:30 p.m., $115 for our residents, $120 for non-residents. Four seats are left for our annual trek to New York City, round-trip motor coach transportation, second mezzanine seating, and free time in New York. You can contact Parks and Rec for any more information on that event. Get your discount tickets now. They make great holiday gifts and stuffing suffers. For example, movie tickets are $9.50 all year round, which is a really good deal. Discount tickets for a limited number of local attractions are available until December 22. And discount ski lifts to Pennsylvania Mountains will be available before Thanksgiving. Current price list is online for the Parks and Rec Department. Dog licenses, sale of 2020 annual dog license begin December 2. The PA law, Pennsylvania law, requires all dogs over the age of three months must be licensed. Friends of Warminster Parks hometown hero banners are available. Please announce that more banners are being installed along Veterans Way in Warminster Community Park. For an application or more information, visit www.friendsofwarminsterparks.org or stop by the Parks and Rec office. Bark Park, attend the Bark Park orientation session November 18, 6:30 p.m. at the rec and get one month free. Owners must provide proof of current license and rabies certification to attend the orientation to join the park and receive a gate key fob. Parks are open from sunrise to sunset. After dusk, you must have a permit or risk of being fined. Parks are officially closed during winter conditions. Please do not feed the wildlife, especially the fox, deer, and geese in the parks. Supplemental feeding encourages wildlife to lose their fear of people and become dependent on handouts that are not part of their natural diets. Cyclists must yield to pedestrians on all park trails. Park restroom and snack stands will be closed in November to prevent frozen pipes and valves. Porta potties will be available year-round at Kemper Park. For more information on any of these items, please contact the Parks and Recs office or go on the website, wwwwarminster township.org/specialevents. Thank you. That was a mouthful.
Thank you, Ms. Freskettor. Mr. Monroe, did you have any other announcements this evening?
No, I've already addressed it. Thank you very much.
No problem. All right. With that, we're going to move on. We have no presentations this evening, so we're going to move right into item number three, which is Land Use Matters, Public Area Ordinances. First up is the ordinance 759, Update the Defined Contribution Plan Ordinance. For that, I'm going to turn the floor over to Mr. Hyne.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What we're seeking this evening is a motion to authorize the advertisement of an amendment to ordinance 746, which will amend Article 1, Section 126, entitled Vesting Percentage of the Defined Benefit Plan to make the AFSCME/WTEO Employee Vesting Percentage the same as the Township's at-will employees' vesting schedule. So if we could get authorization of that at my office, we'll facilitate that, and we would have that up for adoption consideration at your next meeting.
All right. Is there any questions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment that this is really good news that we're doing this because the goal that we've had in mind all along with going to this defined contribution for new hires was to make sure that these people are as whole as the people that are in defined contribution when they get to the end. And this is just another step to see that. It's going to take years to get there, but this is another step in that direction, so very pleased.
It is a step in the right direction. That's my only comment.
There you go. Mr. Monroe, any comment?
None right now.
All right. Let's see. Well, we'll take the motion first and then ask for public. Can I have a motion for the authorization to advertise ordinance?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any comment from the public on the motion? Any further from the board? I'm seeing none. I'm going to call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
When the chair votes aye, passes 4-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And again, that will be on your November 21st agenda.
Excellent.
Thank you.
As I mentioned earlier, 3B has been struck. We will now move on to number four, public comment. Township residents have the opportunity at this time to comment on any non-agenda items subject to a five-minute guideline. As many people at the polls reminded me on Tuesday, five minutes is five minutes.
You know, I was reminded of that a few times.
Yep. So in my swan song here, my last four meetings, I'm going to try to do it.
And our unofficial timekeeper, Chief Donnelly, is the big advocate for that as well.
Oh, he looks so excited to be doing that.
Nonetheless, is there any public comment, please?
Hey, Darlene Baker, 1537 Walberry Circle. And I know it's not on the agenda today. I'm not sure when it's going to be on the agenda, but the voting for selling the water authority. So I came to Mr. Schuster's, one of his detailed meetings, and that was really, really helpful. And I went through all the numbers, and I think it's irresponsible if we allow Warminster to go into Act 47. So I really do think, looking at North Penn and what they have to offer, the water authority up there, and the rates, and the service they've provided to their constituents over the years, and Warrington recently, it seems like a good and needed move for us. We're buying their water at a premium right now anyway, so that's something that I feel pretty strongly about. So I really do think it's irresponsible for us to let Warminster go into an Act 47. We lose all control then.
And I don't think any of us, including the supervisors-elect, want to see that happen or are going to let that happen. I really don't. I don't want to speak for them, but I don't think, knowing them well enough, I don't think they want that either.
Until this is all passed, I'm going to come up every time.
We're always glad to see. Do you have any park stuff for us? Do you have any friends in the park? Got some happy stuff?
No, I think Kathy covered it very nicely. We just had a park board meeting yesterday, and we had Bridget, I don't know her last name, I apologize for that, but she was talking to us about having butterfly sections for the monarch butterflies, and she did a really nice presentation. So hopefully, we'll get some volunteers to help out, kind of replenish the monarch butterflies who are really important as bees in pollination and everything. So that's probably initiative you're going to be hearing more about as well.
I know a lot of nights I go home from these meetings and say to my wife, geez, I wish I was still on the park board. I remember, you were the one that told me, too, why are you doing this?
All right.
No, thanks, Darlene.
Thank you.
And just to touch on it, I think it's pretty safe to say that because we're about to turn over three-fifths of this board in January, I do not expect that the water authority, the idea of the water authority sale would come up until after the new board is seated. I don't expect that, I don't plan on taking that action at this time. I plan on, I mean, I've been clear on what I support, and I'll advocate it as a resident when my term ends, but at this point, I don't expect us to entertain that item until the new board is seated and allow them to decide what way they want to go. So that's just my two cents on the item, and since I set the agenda, that's probably what's going to happen, right? Moving on, but thank you, Darlene, and please, keep speaking up all the time. All the different opinions matter. Any other public comment this evening? All right. Yeah, come on up.
Hi, my name's Gary McGinty, 688 Sherrell Drive. Forty-year resident of Warminster this November now. I'd just like to thank the township. My neighborhood's been under construction, streets, roads, water, Pico, the whole thing. They repaved our road, finally completed it just a couple days ago. Amidst all the weather, the storms that we had, I'm just really impressed at the way that they stayed diligent and get it done. And I guess also, the road crew that did the paving, that's our own guys, I assume, right? It's not just our blood?
Yeah, this year, we tried a new arrangement in past, the authority, when they came through, they contracted out their paving. We worked it out where they reimbursed us for the purchase of materials, and our guys did the paving themselves, just like they would any other road. So it seems to be working very well this year. The milling is something that's still contracted out at all times. We don't do our own milling, but it seems like it's working very efficiently this year.
Yeah, yeah, they were really coordinated in what they did. And, you know, the neighbors trying to get in and out of their driveways and stuff like that, they really facilitated everybody trying to move the equipment, working them in and out and everything. So I really want to thank you for that. I mean, it really worked out well. Thank you very much.
I'll be sure to pass it along to the road crew.
Definitely, please do.
And the foreman's right here.
The public works director's right behind you. Go pass it along.
And you know, interesting part is, for a few years there, we were contracting all of it out, and we were fortunate enough to have Eric Hines come to work for us. And Eric worked for Alan Myers. There was a heavy highway paving company for many years, and we decided to bring it back in-house because of his expertise, and it's working out tremendously. Because we're getting things done, and he's getting the supplemental paving after that that we hadn't done in years all over town, because we were paving right up to the end. But now we're able to get to other things, so.
Yeah, good. The second thing is the trash company, Mascarow. I always know they always get a bad rap with a lot of stuff. I mean, I'm forty years. I mean, I paid on my own, and then we went to the contract through the township. I've always been satisfied. The guys are always great out there. The road's under construction. They came back cruising the neighborhood two or three different times trying to get in, to get the trash picked up, and finally, after 6 o'clock or 6:30, one of the trucks would ever come by and get the trash for us and everything. So, I mean, Mascarow, in my mind, does a great job. I think a lot of people could help them out a little bit better, you know, what they do.
I couldn't agree with you more. I couldn't agree with you more. I think they do a great job.
I agree, too. I think they do a great job.
Just a quick question. Is it possible for you to come every meeting?
I'm a blue-collar guy, so, you know, when the compliments come all the way down to the bottom, which helps out a little bit. I did have one question, though. I was at the meeting for the Dausch reform, and a discussion about a stop sign at Marion and Ivyland Road. Is that still something?
Stop sign, I don't.
You know, because, I mean, we're all concerned about the traffic, the speed, and that new road coming in over there.
I will look into the land development plans, but I think we did not require them to put one in at that intersection.
No, I don't think it was a requirement, but I thought it was something they were going to look into.
I know it was a discussion, but I'm not sure what.
Was it they were going to go talk to PennDOT about it, or?
I don't.
Can we get, we're going to look back into and get back this?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we'll look into it and see what we can do.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for complimenting our guys. We don't often, the public works guys especially, don't get to hear it a whole lot, so.
No, never. I don't know anything.
Even if you were, it was your kid.
The check's in the mail.
And if you leave your contact information with Amanda, she'll be able to get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to consent agenda. Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A very, very light consent agenda for this evening, two items. Item A is approval of your minutes from your October 17 meeting, and item B is approval of a copier lease with Heritage Business Systems. This would be a five-year lease done via Co-Stars. We are changing the lease parameters as well as decreasing the number of machines. Our projected savings through this lease is going to be $550 per month.
Awesome. Any questions on the consent agenda?
I love it. We're saving $550 a month. Great.
Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Is there any questions or comments from the public? I'm seeing none. I'm going to call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, passes 4-0. All right. Our finance report, Mr. Treasurer.
Okay, I'm going to put a motion for the approval of the supplemental transfers and the supplemental bill list dated October 31, 2019, in the amount of $1,114,558.12. And I'm going to ask Mr. Schuster to just give a brief description, because there's supplemental transfers involved here that we need to review. And that's a motion I'm going to need a second.
Do you want to do the second first? You want me to?
Yeah. Well, I'm going to take my pocket, and I'll second that motion.
All right. Just a brief explanation. You'll notice on the transfer sheet, it's broken down towards the end. I'm looking at this sheet right here in your package if you want to look along. But what we discovered is that there were some transfers in funds that should have been made in past years over to the capital fund that were not made. So we're correcting that oversight. So there is going to be a transfer from the Park and Rec Fund to the Capital Fund for items in 2017 and 2018, a transfer from Park and Rec for 2019, for this year. Likewise, there'll be a transfer from the Library Fund to the Capital Fund for 2017 and 2018. There will also be a transfer from the General Fund for 2017, and the transfer from the General Fund to the Capital Fund for 2019. So we are catching up on a few years where those transfers did not occur.
Any questions? All right. Any comments or questions from the public? I'm seeing none. I'm going to call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, passes 4-0. All right. Mr. Schuster?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Moving on to the budget amendment. As you're aware, the second-class township code provides that you can make changes to the annual budget once three months has elapsed. This would be the first such, sorry, the fifth such budget amendment of 2019, and this would be Resolution 2019-29. You can see in the Excel spreadsheet the breakdown of all the transfers. Most of them are relatively minor. All of them are budget-neutral in each respective fund, with the exception of the transfers that you just approved. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Schuster?
None here.
All right. So can I get a motion to approve the resolution of the budget amendment?
I'll go, Mr. Monroe.
Mr. Monroe with the first. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments from the public? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, passes 4-0. All right. Number seven, unfinished business is finished, so we can move on to number eight, new business. Greg?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item under new business is authorization advertised, a TAN RFP. TAN is Tax Anticipation Note. As you're aware, we do have financial issues, and our fund balance has become dramatically low. Also, as you're aware, we don't take in revenue on a steady stream throughout the year. Things like earned income tax are more steady, but the property tax, we don't get the bulk of that until the second quarter, which means the first quarter, second quarter can be a little challenging in terms of cash flow if you don't have adequate fund balance. Unfortunately, we're in the position where we do need to have the short-term financing in place. This has been previously done in Warminster. The last time it was done was 2015. I believe it was done several years prior to that as well. After 2015, there was sufficient fund balance to not have to do this process, but we are recommending going out for an RFP to seek $1.5 million in short-term financing through a tax anticipation note.
Any questions for Mr. Schuster?
Just a comment. I mean, to me, this is very disturbing that there was a lot of heavy lifting done here for several years to build that fund balance that was completely depleted in the last two years due to inaction by this board. Very disappointing to me.
Any other comments, questions? All right. Can I get a motion authorized to advertise for the anticipation note?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any questions, comments from the public? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, passes 4-0. We are now up to the main event, the budget presentation. For that, I'm going to turn the floor over to Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a PowerPoint presentation for you this evening. Before I start, I just want to make note that as you look through the budget, you may see it look quite different than past budgets in a couple specific areas. The first one is one we just talked about, and that is the TAN. That tax anticipation note does increase both the revenue and the expenditure side of the budget. So if you're ever comparing, you know, year to year, just be cognizant, there's that jump for that short-term financing. The other, and probably more substantive change, is that based on the board's previous direction, the budget was prepared with the assumption that there would be a sale of assets, specifically the sewer and water system. So all of that was taken into account, and I will speak more to that as we go through the budget. So tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about the fiscal condition, the assumptions that is involved with the budget that's being proposed, and then go through some of the fund highlights. So I'm talking everything here at a very high level, and most of this is things you've seen before, probably many times. So as we go to the next slide, please. Net income, as you can see, we have had steadily decreasing net income. We were positive back in 2015 and 2016, but the deficits were occurring starting in 2017. Again, in 2008, we had smaller deficits, about $300,000, which grew to about $1.5 million in 2018. 2019, we obviously don't have final numbers, but we're projecting somewhere around $1.3, $1.4 million deficit that will be realized. As you shift over to 2020 and what is budgeted, you'll see that there's a smaller deficit of $100,000. Again, that's with the assumption that there is a sale and all the revenue comes in and is allocated per the plan that has been discussed. Also, and we're going to talk about this a little bit in future slides, as we get to fund balance, just be very careful on how you read the fund balance chart, because if you look at that and say, oh, my God, 2019, we're going to be ending with a quarter million dollars in the bank, we're broke, it's not exactly. Because what happens when you have a deficit in a future year, that money is, quote-unquote, "reserved" in the fund balance. So don't look at that and think that's what the cash is now. The situation is still dire, but I just want to make sure everyone's crystal clear on what that number actually means. But you can see what's happened over time, 2015 and 2016, you can see the peak of what's happened in fund balance, and as we've gone through the last few years, that fund balance has been steadily eaten into by the deficits. As I said, when you look at the cash, and I think that's going to be critically important as we start getting into next year, is to always know what the cash position is of the township. We're going to have approximately, you know, 2.4 million, 2.3, 2.4 million appropriate offset the budgeted deficit. So we think that at the end of 2019, we'll have approximately $2.5 to $2.6 million in the bank. We are not including in that number two things that you should be aware of. One is 9/11 York Road. We do expect significant revenue coming in from that, about half a million dollars. That is gross. There's still going to be some expenses that go along with the inspections of that property. And we do have the operating reserve, which is now up to about $556,000. So we still have some additional funds there. The main thing that I'd like everyone to take away from the cash is that as it relates to 2020, we will most likely have sufficient cash to get through 2020. Now, it's going to be close in 2021, and we're going to be in the exact same position, but we do have the cash to go ahead and get through 2020 as it stands right now. As you know, things can change. Revenues can always go up, go down, and there could be a significant expenditure that we didn't consider, or just, you know, something catastrophic could happen. One example of that is we know that the HVAC system at the senior center is on its very last legs, and that could be a major expense if it goes and we have no resources.
Let's rewind just for one second, if you would. So we're assuming there's a sale of the authority. If there's not, we're reverting back again to the smoothing method, underfunding the pension deliberately, and an eight percent...
Getting there, yes.
And an eight percent assumed rate of return, which is ludicrous as well.
I'm getting there, yes, yes. So moving forward, you know, as we're talking about to the MMO. If we went ahead and did the sale of the sewer and water system, the proceeds from the sale after closing costs would pay the unfunded liabilities of the pension, we would adjust the assumed rate of return to a more reasonable six and three-quarters percent. If we, prior to 2020, we were using eight percent, which is obviously too high. This is what the chart, and this is the same graph I show you every single year. This is what the new graph would look like if we did the plan with selling the sewer and water assets. You can see that it is funded at six and three-quarters percent. You can see the level of funding that occurs, so no one should be under the impression that we're not spending anything on pension anymore. You still have the normal cost that you have to pay. We don't be talking about paying off the unfunded liability. But you can see the MMO is much, much lower, and it is funded. Now, getting to Mr. McKee's point, if it does not occur, if there is not a sale, and you remain at eight percent with assumed rate of return, this is what the chart would look like. And you can see that the combined MMO continues to skyrocket. You know, it's going up to close to $3.5 million at a funding level of almost $2.5 million. So that's about a million-dollar gap. And again, that's at eight percent. If you were to plug in something like six and three-quarters, like we were, you know, proposing to do, that gap widens a lot more.
And I know you're gonna get to this eventually, too. We have a substantial amount of employees that are gonna be eligible for retirement in the next two to three years, correct?
I wasn't gonna talk specifically about it, but since you brought it up, yes.
That's going to impact that as well.
So...
Not in a good way, either.
So I, how should I put this? I've been worried about a blue wave, and not the one you guys have been talking about. The blue wave that I've been worried about is the massive amount of police officers that are about to retire. And I'm sure the chief can go through the history if you want to hear, but there was a sizable amount of police officers that were hired around the same time, and some of them are already eligible, and many of them will be, and I do have numbers here. So in the next, going out to 2025, we have 19 police officers and six non-uniform employees who would be eligible for post-retirement healthcare. So that's what's coming. You can expect a jump of close to a million dollars.
And for the folks at home, that's OPEB. We've discussed it at some length over the past year and a half to two years, that this is another bubble that's going to explode on us in the next few years.
Exactly.
It's gonna need to be dealt with.
And that's why I always keep on bringing up the OPEB, because it's not something which is going to stay steady. Right now, we're spending, you know, $330,000 as much budget for OPEB next year. That could balloon up to over half a million dollars in just one year. But it's definitely gonna go up even higher once all these retirees hit. I can't tell you when each individual employee is going to retire, but I can tell you that we're gonna have to deal with this at some point. So that million-dollar figure I gave, that's if everyone retired if they were eligible, when they were eligible. But if it's not then, it just might get pushed out a little bit, but it is gonna be substantial over the next few years, the increase in OPEB. So assumptions and risks. Again, this whole budget assumes a sale of the sewer and water system. If that doesn't occur, there's gonna be substantial issues going forward. As I said earlier, the proceeds from that sale would pay the closing costs, would adjust the assumed rate of return to six and three-quarters, pay off the unfunded liabilities of the pension, establish and fund the OPEB trust, which would address those post-retirement healthcare, and invest the remaining funds to generate interest for future operations. Risks, and I wanna list two big risks. The new board may wish to proceed in a different direction. Chairman already mentioned that we're gonna be having three new supervisors come January, so if the board wants to go in a different direction, that's a risk to this budget if no tax increase were to be put in. Another risk is a party might file court action that would delay the process of any kind of sale. So those are two risks the board should be aware of with this budget. So this is the big thing that I wanted to get across. It's painfully obvious that we're running out of money, and that every second we wait, the problem just gets worse and worse, and it's coming to the cliff pretty soon. So the one thing I want to highlight is, if this board does not want to sell both the sewer and water system, or if you believe the process is going to be delayed, my recommendation is that for the 2020 budget, you increase the general fund mill rate to the legal maximum of 19. It's the best you can do to help get you out of this situation. Moving on to some of the highlights in the funds. In the general fund, there's no tax increase proposed. Again, that's based on the sale of the sewer and water assets. I just highlighted the risks of that. Already talked about what would happen with the revenue of the sale. For reductions, we are eliminating the third-party accountant that's been in the finance department. We would remove OPEB costs from departmental budgets and reallocate it to the OPEB trust. The pension obligation would be reduced to the normal cost. That's when you saw in the MMO, the spike downwards. For capital, the only thing that's being proposed is purchase of five new police vehicles. We're trying to stay up on that program, but we're deferring all other capital needs. Staffing, the proposal would be to eliminate one currently vacant full-time police administration position and replace that with two part-time community service officers. And of course, you already approved this evening, the RFP for the TAN for 2020 to reduce cash flow issues. For other funds, and these are funds where I am recommending a tax increase...
Can I stop you for a second? I'm sorry, but I just wanna go back to the police cars.
Yeah.
Back in the, like, 2010-ish, 2011 period, we put a hold on police cars for a while, and it cost us. I mean, we're doing the right thing by replenishing that fleet year in and year out, because it cost us by not doing that. So we're, I mean, the public's gonna be saying, "Why are they buying six police cars?" Well, in the past, when we were in a situation like this, we just, the previous board, not this board, but, said, "Well, we're gonna put a hold on every bit of spending, no police cars." But it ended up costing us in the end. That fleet needs to be replenished every year, because those cars take one heck of a beating, a lot of miles.
It always costs you more in the end if you don't have a good fleet management program. One of the things I like to say is you're always going to buy new police cruisers. Do you wanna buy a whole one, or you wanna buy it one piece at a time?
Right.
Trust me, buying the whole one is a lot more effective.
And we found that out before, so, I mean, I know that might come up, "Why are you doing this?", so that's why.
Can I just, I just wanna support what Mark just said, 100%. Obviously, I haven't been a cop. They go through a tremendous amount of beating. And just, when I was a rookie, I got an old Capri that you had to pop out of, it was an automatic, and you had to pop out and do another shift just to get it going more than 10 miles an hour. You don't want that for Warminster Police, so I completely agree with you.
I also agree with Mr. McKee. We need to keep those cars up and running. They do take a beating.
So moving on to other funds, and these are funds where I am recommending a mill rate increase, and I'll go through and explain why. First off, on the ambulance fund, there is a very small structural deficit in that fund, so recommending a .06 mill increase. Again, a very small mill increase there just to take care of that small deficit. Fire fund, this was talked about last year, looking for a quarter-mill increase to fund the workers' compensation insurance. If you're called for this year's budget, we move workers' comp from the general fund to the fire fund. This is workers' comp for the volunteers over to the fire fund, which is the appropriate place for it. We did not, or you did not pass a mill rate increase to fund that, so this year, we did move money over from the general fund into the fire fund to compensate for that. But what I'm asking for is to go ahead and do the appropriate thing, which is make that fire fund self-sufficient with an appropriate military. Next, the park, next two, park and rec fund and debt service fund are related. We are talking about Warminster Community Park here. We are just about ready to go after long back and forth with the state. Gilmore is finishing up all the RFP documents and bid documents to go out to bid for the development of Warminster Community Park. There's two, there's a couple of financial implications with this, though. First, we're looking for a 1.5-mill increase in the park and rec fund. There's already a structural deficit, and has been for a number of years, in the park and rec fund, and although I highlight the general fund, the park and rec fund has been doing the same exact thing. We've been eating into that balance, and it's slowly dwindling. The second part of the mill rate increase is for some additional people, an addition of one full-time laborer and two part-time laborers. With the addition of that many fields and other features that are in that park, it's gonna require a lot more maintenance, and our team is already stretched very thin. So that millage would support that. The second part is the debt service fund, and we're asking for a 1.27-mill increase to fund the short-term debt needed for Warminster Community Park, because, yes, a good chunk of it, the vast majority of it, is grant-funded, but the big part of those grants, not all the grants, but a big part of it, we get reimbursed on the back end. We don't have the funds right now to go ahead and lay out all that money, so we do need that short-term financing. So that's the reason behind all four of those mill rate increase requests.
Okay, so the park one especially, this is a big deal. This is something that's been worked on by Karen, her staff, the park board, our engineers, the administration for years. I mean, how long ago was this initial grant awarded, and the open space grant, years ago? We have to do this. We have to bring this to the finish line. There's a whole lot of time and energy that's been spent for years, and it's tremendous improvements to our park. I'm gonna be thrilled the day I drive by and not see that goofy chain-link fence that's been there since it was an airbase. That's a disgrace, but we have an opportunity here to really do the right thing here, so...
So...
Can I ask you, take you off course a little bit? Fire fund, have we discussed paid firemen? I mean, I know we're up against it here, but, you know, there's...
So I did, along with Joe Veltin, Emergency Management Director, meet with the fire chiefs, and we had a good discussion about what to do for 2020. And what we came to a conclusion was, although we all recognize the need for paid firefighters, we wanna make sure we do it in the most cost-effective manner, and also make sure it's planned out. So for 2020, we're gonna continue as is with the current setup we have, which is during the weekday, we have Hartsville responding along with Warminster Fire Company to the alarms that are going off in the Warminster Fire Company area. Additionally, if that's not enough, we do have talked about having chiefs or even Emergency Management Director respond. If necessary, we'll work through that. But concurrently, and this is the important part, we will be getting to work on a safer grant, and we will be putting before the board a plan that would be partially funded by the safer grant to hire paid firefighters. We've got a bunch of things that we've gotta work out. How many firefighters do we need? Full-time, are they part-time, or is there a stable of part-timers? How are they gonna integrate with the two fire companies? Which apparatus do they use? Are they doing inspections during the day? There's a lot of things that has to get worked out. There's nothing in there that's a showstopper, nothing that would prevent us from getting this done, but there's a lot of things that we just have to iron out, and so 2020 is gonna be the year to go ahead, iron those things out, put that safer grant before you, and start the ball rolling on the paid firefighters. I think it's a critical thing to do for the community. The volunteers are doing a phenomenal job, but they're stretched thin. They have jobs during the day, and for them to respond every single weekday to all the alarms go off, and some days, we're getting two, three alarms, and they've gotta be treated seriously, and it's just, it is really taxing on them. So I think putting forward some relief through paid firefighters is going to enhance and it's going to help the volunteers out. So I think it's something that's absolutely critical as we move forward, but not included in the 2020 budget.
But as long as you've worked it out with the chiefs, that's okay, so we have a game plan?
Yep.
Okay, great, that's good to hear.
So you're figuring, like, in 2021, improvising that grant?
Yes, so we would apply for it and probably start either late 2020 or something, you know, early 21. I don't know the timing, they haven't actually announced the next round, I believe, is Joe back, March was the...
February, March.
February, March.
The application opens.
Yeah, so we'll have more information at that point.
Oh, okay. And now, has the amount changed depending on how many you're gonna be paying and all that for the grant?
Yeah, you can go ahead and apply for, you know, one firefighter, two firefighters, four firefighters, so, yeah, the grant...
More information, like you said, down the road.
What's that? Did you say 30?
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
The safer grant is a great tool, however, it's also a sliding grant, so that it'll pay more upfront each year that goes by, more burden shifts to the township.
Okay.
So we just have to be cognizant of that going forward, that safer grant will help ease us into it, but at the end of the day, we'll still have to pay for the firefighters.
Okay, thank you.
That concludes the presentation. Other than next steps, you have the full binder in front of you. I believe I sent it out about four weeks ago. I'm happy to answer any questions. The department heads are here if you have any specific questions on their budget. In terms of next step, we're hoping that at the next meeting, two weeks from today, you'll be in a position to advertise the proposed budget. I would say this, if there are any changes to what I've proposed, I do need to know that ahead of time. Because if you're gonna propose a budget, we need to know exactly what it is that's gonna go in the paper. So if there's any changes, if you have questions, please let me know ahead of time, even if it's just different options or alternatives, we can have them prepared and ready to go for that meeting. And then, on the 19th of December, you would adopt the final budget. You can, of course, if you wanna have more discussion on the budget, you can schedule other meetings. Just keep in mind, there is a timeframe that's out there on how long you have to advertise a proposed budget for before you can adopt it. And the last note, just to be aware of, because this is an election year, the incoming board does have the right and ability to reopen the budget, make changes, and adjust the mill rate.
Isn't there a percentage, though, of changes that they can make? Correct me if I'm wrong.
So the percentage of changes, so after you notice a preliminary budget or a proposed budget, then you're stuck with a certain percentage change.
That's what I mean.
Yes, that has to do with this. Now, in January, they go, if they wanna reopen the budget, they would go through the same process. They would advertise a new budget, and that budget could be totally different. It could have, there's no restrictions or percentages on that. However, once they put it out as a preliminary budget, they're back in the same spot as being stuck within those percentages.
Understood.
I'm sorry, I don't remember the percentages off the top of my head.
I don't think it's a lot. I think 10%. I don't recall that it's 1% or 10%.
Once you put the preliminary budget out there, it's hard to make major changes.
I think you can only increase up to 10%.
Correct.
You can decrease as much as you want, yeah.
But increase, yeah, okay.
All right. So we have to give strong consideration to the one page that was all in bold letters that you recommend, and going to the 19 mills if there's no action going to be taken in 2020 in regards to the authority.
Yes, this is just pure math. There is a massive deficit in 2020 if no action is taken on the sewer and water system. And in order to forestall Act 47 or further financial issues, the prudent thing to do would be increase the mill rate as much as you can, bearing in mind that that is still not a permanent solution. There are still things that you'd have to work through and figure out a way out of the financial situation.
Any other questions?
No.
Mr. Monroe, anything?
No, not at the top.
Just a comment, I think this young man from the Boy Scouts picked the right meeting to come to. Very educational for you. Do you have any suggestions?
I was gonna recognize him in a moment, Mr. McKee did point out. With that, I'm gonna close the budget discussion for right now, and I'm sure we'll have this again in two weeks. We do wanna recognize our special guest here this evening, young man from the Boy Scouts who's joining us. I'm sure he's riveted by what he's seeing, but I was wondering if you'd just come up to the mic and introduce yourself, if you would, please.
Hi, I'm Christopher Carroll. I'm from Troop Five.
So what do you think of the meeting so far?
Pretty interesting, and good to know all this information.
All right, so you're working towards your Eagle Scout, right? So this is part of, are you gonna come back and see us again sometime? Be great.
Probably, yeah.
And let us know when you get to the Eagle, when you get to the Eagle, that'd be great, too. What grade are you in?
I'm in eighth.
Hi, where do you go to school at?
Klinger.
Excellent, awesome.
Terrific work. Well, I just wanted to thank you for coming out to our meeting, taking an interest in local government. Trust me, I was well into my 30s before I even attended a township meeting, so I think it was like a year before I ran for office, so you're already ahead of the curve.
When someone asks you to run for office, run for the exit.
Exactly.
Immediately.
Exactly. But, you know, great work by you. We're proud of you, and thank you for coming, and thank you for spending your evening with us.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
It's good to meet you, Chris, thanks for coming.
Hopefully, we'll see you again, bud.
He's a very polite young man, kept nodding, trust me. So we wish you the best of luck moving forward, buddy. With that, we are going to move on to Township Manager announcement of upcoming agenda items. Mr. Schuster?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I say that, I do wanna say a real special thank you to everyone that was involved in the storm cleanup that occurred about a week ago. We had a fantastic response. First of all, the police department was on scene in multiple locations when everything broke loose. The fire departments, all companies responded to trees, into houses, fires, all kinds of things that happened in very short order. Everything was stabilized very quickly. Fortunately, I don't believe there were any injuries, so it's really a testament to everything they did. And then, of course, public works coming in right afterwards and doing everything that they possibly could to clear off all those streets. The residents were very patient. I think everyone understood that if there was a tree in contact with a wire, we don't touch it. touch it. We wait for PICO to come, and PICO is obviously stretched in. But it was a very violent storm that came through very quickly, 110 mile an hour straight-line winds. And I just want to thank everyone involved for the quick and speedy cleanup. As for upcoming agenda items, the preliminary budget will be on the agenda, just as we discussed. We will be talking to the Paint the Plow winners for annual contest. The defined contribution ordinance, which you just approved for authorization, will be on the agenda. And I'm not sure if it'll make the next agenda or the following agenda, but the tax anticipation note that you approved moving forward with, will also be on a future agenda.
All right. Any questions?
To say thank you, Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Greg. Thanks, Greg. All right, so, we're going to strike that. We're now on to the second round of public comment. Residents have another opportunity to comment on any items, maximum of five minutes. Is there any public comment coming up, sir?
John Glider, 149 Vista Drive. I just had a question on the budget presentation with the build-out at Warminster Community Park. I was wondering, does that include any of the MS-4 items, like the retention basins and things that are in the MS-4 plan, or is that going to be done separately?
Well, either there's a problem with Karen, or she's violently shaking her head yes back there. So, yes, it does have some of those features. Off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you which ones.
Like, not the rain gardens, but maybe just the retention basins, or...
Karen, do you want to come up, maybe?
But that is going to be done under the townships. I mean, the reason I'm wondering is stormwater management was going to be transferred to the Water Authority.
This project is being done by the township.
By the township, yes, okay.
I'm Karen Whitney, Parks Recreation. Yeah, there are a whole series of different stormwater, it's required by DEP that we retain all the water on-site. So, Gilmore has designed different types of stormwater catch basins.
Yeah, I've seen the drawings. I just wondered if it was going to be done.
Yes, it will all be done as part of the grant.
But that's not the entire MS-4 plan, though, correct?
No, 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 no.
Right, it's not the entire plan, just a portion. Right, just to clarify.
But just while you're at it, you're going to do the stuff apart.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Glider.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
Oh, she's back.
Yeah.
Darlene Baker, 1537 Memorial Circle. And I forgot, you said thank you to all the people who did that storm. That was a nasty storm, and everybody did a phenomenal job, and I'm glad nobody was hurt.
This as well?
Everybody deserves a big round of applause.
Even our friends from PICO...
I saw you posting, giving updates, and I really do appreciate the updates that you provided throughout the time.
I can't work a chainsaw, so that's all I can do.
That's good, thank you.
But even the people from PICO who normally take a beating, I mean, was there six poles went down on the street road?
Street, that was, I've never seen anything like that.
Had a pretty good, fair amount of time, pretty good amount of time, I thought.
And all the years I've lived here, I've never seen anything like that, and they did a phenomenal job.
Any other public comment? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to supervisor's comment. With that, Mr. Monroe?
None this evening. Thank you very much.
No problem. Ms. Fescator?
I just want to thank all of our emergency services for doing a phenomenal job in the township, and a lot of residents gave you a lot of compliments. And also, Mr. Schuster, you posted things on Facebook, you posted things on the website, you gave us emails. Everybody was very well informed. I got a lot of compliments to give to you from folks that have said. And I also wanted to thank Eric Hines and his crew. Guys are doing a great job on all those roads, and it seems like you were everywhere in the past couple of weeks. I was really impressed. And with that, that's it. And also, not to be remiss, to thank everybody that was involved in putting the budget together to receive that prestigious award again. We're so proud of all of our staff, and thank you.
I'm sorry, can I interrupt you?